I'd like to call this meeting of the Town and Board of Order. There are a couple of little things I would like to do tonight, first before we get started. First of all, I'd like to introduce our new member, Sherry Berry. She'll be spending the next seven years with us, which sounds like she did something wrong. I think we all feel that way ourselves, but we're delighted to have her. And I think she brings a lot of good skills and could be a tremendous addition to our planning board. We have a few changes in the posted agenda. Judith Delwork has withdrawn her application, so we will not have that public hearing tonight. And Donald Corin, under New Business, has withdrawn his application as well. So he will not be doing that tonight. That's the agenda, as I understand it. Have you all had a chance to review the regular meeting minutes of our December 16th meeting?
Yes.
Could I hear motion to approve? Second?
Second.
On the favor?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. I have no correspondence and announcements. We have another duty to do. We need to elect vice chair for our planning board. And I open the floor to nominations.
I nominate quality more.
Could I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any other nominations? On the favor?
Aye.
Very good. Another year of that bad to do. Okay. I think what we can do right now is, a couple, a meeting or two ago, we approved a subdivision on SSS Farms and Vito's property, a 20-acre subdivision. And she spoke with Marie, who's here with us tonight, about changing it slightly. And I think we haven't put it on the board. It's basically, there's a pond on the property. And I believe the ZBAs felt that the entire pond should be on one property, rather than shared by both properties. Because it's created by a dam. And once you have two people partially responsible for something like that, you have two people responsible for the dam's maintenance and things like that. And you've got to be simpler to just have it on one property. So Marie, if you'd just like to explain where it is.
Thank you, Michael. You just did all that explanation for me.
You're very welcome.
Yeah. As you can see, the southerly property line, we actually just set our distance, offset, I believe, was 500 feet, and went straight to the back corner, created the lot that was going to encompass the existing buildings. We had the approval of the planning board. We were waiting on a couple of conditions, one of which is being the letter of approval for the access point from the Dutch County Department of Public Works. But when I actually went with my map in hand to my client last week for her to sign it, she said, "Well, I really didn't know that it went through the pond." The surveyor never sent her a copy after it was... Yeah, I just went with what my instructions were. And so she asked me, could I, you know, as you can see, I'll point it out, you know, around the edge of the pond here, so that the pond is all on the remaining lands. So I didn't want to make any change to the map without the, you know, the planning board seeing that change. Since that's part of the protocol, is that it was approved previously with a different rendition. So I'm back here before the planning board to ask you to accept this site modification. The area is still over 20 acres. It amounts to about .212 acres, if we'd have kept the line straight versus going around the pond. So it's still, it's over 20, 21 acres, 21.9. It's up in the upper management, 21.4 acres.
I think Sherry and I did the site visit, and I don't see that this makes any difference whatsoever with the availability of appropriate facilities to take care of this particular change. I think that, what I would like to do is, I have a resolution that we could approve this change, so that it's done officially, rather than having the whole process go through again, which I don't think is really necessary. But let me read this and see if you all like this. Jim Rowland, if you don't like it. The Town and Board of Order approves the minor lot line alignment revision impressed by SSS Farms LLC to previously approved minor subdivision of November 18, 2019, under Town Code Chapter 111, Section 101.4, Part 1, at 311 River Road, within the HB20 zoning district, to realign the lot line around the existing pond. Then the rest of the regulation I have here is basically a restatement of what we said before. It's just a few new, small change. So could I hear a motion to approve? Second? A poll aboard, just... Edna?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Melody?
Kathy?
Aye.
Aye.
Lauren?
Sherry's. And I go con, so you're all set.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Gretchen. Five minutes, not up.
It's about 1:30 seconds.
Okay, good, thanks. Thank you very much.
Thank you. One other thing I forgot to do, an acceptance of Jim's meeting minutes for us tonight. Could I hear a motion to approve? Accept?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
On the favor? Very good, thank you. Okay, I think we can move right along to Mysteria Properties LLC, Morton Road.
Good evening. Mark Verminsky, representing Mysteria Properties LLC. This property is, excuse me, located on the west side of Morton Road. It was actually created, there are two parcels in this application. It was actually created by a previous subdivision approved by the Town of Ryenbeck in June of 1984. And my client, Mysteria Properties, purchased both of the lots. A total parcel size is, the front piece is... The front piece, which is Lot 5A, is about 8.1 acres. This piece right here. And that is Lot Number 5A. And then Lot Number 5B, right here, is 8.296 acres. There is, access was approved as a common driveway back in, back in 1984. And that driveway exists. So this piece right through here is an existing driveway that was cut in when Mysteria bought the property. And this parcel also gained approval from the Dutch County Department of Health originally for construction of two residential, you know, residences, you know, one on each property. And with approved locations for sanitary facilities, septic systems, and also wells. So it's on, those were previously approved on both the properties. When Mysteria originally bought this property, they, the intention was to, we had a pre-application meeting on this, with the planning board. The intention was to construct a house in this area here, and then probably have caretakers' residence with that. They since moved on from the property and actually purchased existing residents, two parcels to the north. And so what they're trying to do is sell the property now. And in doing that, they've been marketing the property. They've come across, you know, multiple buyers, but they want to know what is allowable for tree removal on this specific property. A little specifically is the piece right through here. So as I said, west side of Morton Road. Here's the railroad, and over in here is the Hudson River. So they, you know, want to see what people purchasing the property want to see, what the available views are here. When Mysteria originally bought this property, it engaged the services of Ecological Solutions to delineate the wetlands on the property and also do a habitat study for the property. So the dotted areas here that you see are Army Corps here, a piece here, here, and through here, a stream going through here. And then there's a wetland area here that actually drains, and there's a ditch. You can see that line coming through there, there's a ditch. That's core wetland also. So these are, these are wetlands classified by the Army Corps of Engineers. And then obviously, since it's in the Town of Ryenbeck, there's this dash line going around all the wetland areas that's associated with 100-foot adjacent area per the Town of Ryenbeck code. So this application is simply to clear some, do some tree clearing on the site, so that they can market the property. And what I've shown here is a scout area, which represents clearing in this area through here. There may be some additional clearing for the roadway, and then ultimately clearing for a house and wastewater disposal systems. Here's a septic, here's the primary septic system for this lot. Primary septic system, oh no, it's right here, primary septic system expansion here. Actually, expansion is here for Lot Number 5B. The advocates only wish to clear trees under six inches in diameter. There's a lot of small growth, especially in this area here. Actually, when they originally bought the property, I had discussion with the town, with the zoning administrator at the time, to take out some dead and diseased trees through here. There's, the entire property is wooded. So, you know, we cleaned up the dead and diseased trees along the roadway so we could get access down there. But since they've moved on and liked to market it, the idea would be to, and this is the primary area of concern, to work in this area. And to take all, the majority of the small growth, and as I said, under six inches in diameter for the trees to be removed. That's, one thing I will note, the, I am making a new application to the Health Department. It was, it had gone through several renewals of the water supply, the well and septic systems. And the last renewal, the engineer who looked at it noticed some potential encroachments on the, within 100 feet of the wetlands. And so I'm actually going to make modifications to the plans and submit those to the Health Department and clear that up, so that it'll be, we'll get an updated approval from the Health Department. Other than that, that's, you know, that's the proposal for this project.
You want to use the same, excuse me, same building envelopes?
So I chose the building envelopes very carefully, because I wanted to present, I'll be honest, I wanted to present a plan that met the zoning criteria for this. Because obviously, from 1984 until, was it 2010?
2009.
2009, zoning was adopted. So those building envelopes, good for pointing that out, Woody, are right here. It's a limited area there, this lot, the same thing here. So I chose to include them in the allowed, in the required setbacks. If someone chooses to build outside of that, they would need to make application to this board and so there's zoning board appeals. If they choose to, if they choose to construct anything outside, they approve setbacks, or the allowable setbacks.
I think that it was back in December, a couple of us did a preliminary, that's all right, site visit to this, to see exactly what the land looked like, to see what the issues were, whatnot. And it was cold, it was wet, I was sleeping at the time. And Mark very kindly took us down there. And I have these in the trucks, so couldn't get back. But that's okay.
So it was actually a great visit, because we got to see all of the properties since we had to walk back out to the road.
Henry West.
And my wife was nice enough, kind enough to come.
Very kind.
She left me there.
No.
We wonst.
But we got you back. But looking at it, there is a great deal of sort of broken, scrubby stuff on here. We wanted to go down this, you know, this preliminary look, go with Mark, and see exactly what he had in mind, what he heard was worth. There is an issue, I think, with some invasive species. Obviously, there are some things of that sort of stuff. There's been damage to the storms in the last 10, 20 years. And I think that that's sort of what they're looking at doing, I think principally. What we would do, what I would ask, is we have a procedural resolution that a couple of people who did not go down to this last time, go down to take a look and see what, you know, see what you think, Mark. I think probably at this point, give a better handle on exactly what you're looking at doing, what you're looking at clearing, what you're looking at saving.
Absolutely.
And to give us a, you know, a better firsthand view of exactly, you know, what's in store here.
What I can do is flag it up prior to having board members there. I'll flag up the area.
That would be very helpful.
Yeah, so it's visible. And also I should note, with the clearing, so that the approach is, and I struggle a little bit with the application. The approach is just to flush cut and ship everything, and just cascade it on the property. So, you know, so the application is site plant special permit in wetland. But, you know, whether or not I was, you know, we're technically disturbing the wetland because there'd be no excavation of the stumps for any of the, any of the growth. It'll just be flush cut and shipped, shipped on site. But, and I discussed it with Gretchen on how to submit the application. And I have listed disturbances on that, but, you know, technically, we're just driving around. So we're trying to, you know, once again, just minimize disturbance on the site and just clear out some of that, you know, the basic growth and the smaller vegetation. That's it.
Anyone else have questions, Mark?
The area towards the river, where the tree removal is planned, is that all high ground or are there low areas and freshes?
So Sharon, right here, remember, so we parked, you were with us, right? Sharon wasn't with us?
No, I was there several years ago.
Okay, okay. So there's a, this is a high point right here, there's a bit of ridge. This all, this all drops down. Here's the low point right there, and then there's back, there's a ridge back up here, right through here, and then you can overlook the tracks in the river. So it's both. It includes both. It includes, you know, and this is, this is, these are larger trees in here. So these trees would remain right now, and then depending on, you know, somebody comes in and has an idea for a, you know, a different footprint for a house, or they want to do additional clearing, some of those larger trees through here would have to come out for the residents. But this drops down to the wetland, goes back up through here. This is higher, drops down this way. And this continues to just keep, here's the low point right through here, and then it goes back up a little bit.
Mark, I have a problem with this coming to the planning board. I don't think there's anyone on this side of the table that's qualified to say, "Cut that tree, but don't cut that one," okay? And my suggestion is that ought to go to Conservation Advisory Board for what specific trees get taken down. I'm not qualified to say that.
Okay. I think it gets, Woody gets, his CAB gets a look at this.
Gets a look at your job.
Yeah. But I think they should be the primary consultant.
They would definitely be involved in the decision and their report to us. But yeah, who are the ones involved here? They have to approve or disapprove of, I think, those septic systems. Right. Anyone else?
Oh, I have a question. You mentioned doing some work in preparation for a visit. What would that consist of?
Hanging some flags to delineate the clearing areas.
Okay, but not tagging specific stuff.
Excuse me?
Are you able to tag what would remain? In other words...
I could, I could do that. I could flag the remaining trees.
Let me show you.
Oh, I wasn't, I was just going to put some flags. I was going to do, you know, like a view shed from there, but I'll do both. Color code it, trees to remain blue. I'm wanting to do my color.
I don't think you have to tag what you don't want to remain, but might be helpful to tag what you want to remain.
Okay, I can do that.
And I'm assuming it's principally within some of the development areas, and that's...
It is, you know, so it's... Shoot, oh, sorry. Thank you. Yeah, this obviously, house site, house site will go somewhere here. Truthfully, it may need to extend closer to the north. But once again, this would get cleared because of the location of the septic here. Even with my redesign, or amend the existing plans, the septic's are going to generally stay in the same location. So, and I guess I can, I can also, I'll flag that information too. I can locate, you know, this one and locate this one here.
Any more questions? Okay, I have a procedural resolution.
I have a question, if you may. I just need to be clear, is this two parcels that were joined in 84 or were separated in 84?
They were subdivided, so it's a single parcel, and two parcels recreated in 1984.
Okay, and there's no plan on hand for the other parcel?
Yeah, there is. That's also house location, septic.
Right. But no tree clearing or anything that matters?
I show, I tried to be complete with the application. So, you know, whether it gets cleared at this time, not sure. But I tried to include what ultimately would be done to the property.
All right. The Town and Board of Order hereby access follows on the application by Mysteria Properties LLC for site plan approval, special use for a wetlands permit, to reflect for clearing of the site on Morton Road in the HB20 River District zoning district. Accepts the application supporting documents as added for initiation due by the planning board's advisors and public. Fast advice to opposed action and an understated action for its coordinated environmental quality review is completed. Schedules a public hearing on the application for February 25th?
At 6:35.
February 25th at 6:35. And directs quick, if you want to take an otherwise positive notice and postman there off. Who would like to go? Edna, Sharon? Edna and Sharon will do the site visit, maybe we'll get in touch with the CAB.
I'll let the board know.
In accordance with Town Code Chapter 9, the Conservation Advisory Board refers to the application by the Conservation Advisory Board for review and written comment concerning environmental factors. In accordance with Town Code Chapter 118, water point consistency review evades the application to the Water Point Advisory Committee for review and written comment concerning consistency with the LWRP. In accordance with the Dutch County Department of Planning and Development, P39 Zone Planning Inferior refers to the application to the Dutch County Department of Planning and Development for review. Authorizes without prejudice to any inclination or comment that may be presented at the public hearing or may arise based on both the above cited site visit and inferior. Preparation for working draft and approvals resolution for the planning board's consideration on February 20th, 2020, whereas maybe later timing. Could I hear a motion to approve?
No.
Second?
Second.
On the favor? Very good.
Thank you.
Our next group is Cole Primmrose LLC, 640 Rose Hill Road, Site Science, that used to be, and brick barned accessory dwelling.
Your location of the site plan, your location planning process, and your in doubt. Should you probably provide some in doubt?
Second? This one's probably okay, as long as it has an idea of where it is. In fact, I'm really careful. I don't want it to bring you down. Yeah, I think that's pretty good scale of that. So I'm Darren Dubitowicz of the Art of Building here on behalf of Old Primmrose LLC tonight. And the property we're talking about is number 6, Old Primmrose Hill Road. And the location of this is at the very north end of Old Primmrose Hill Road, the closest point to Accra Hook Road, if you're exiting onto Primmrose Hill Road from the street here. So if you travel just a little bit further north, you'd intersect Primmrose Hill Road and Accra Hook Road is just about that point north of this site. So there's really two reasons we're here tonight, to talk about this 6.5 acre parcel, which is, by the way, located in the RC5 zone. The first reason is, we're proposing to convert an existing barn, this barn here, to a detached accessory dwelling unit. And the second reason we're here tonight is to talk about adding, well, there is a fence here that requires planning board approval, which is a 6-foot privacy fence. So there's actually two matters that we're here to talk to the planning board about with respect to this parcel. Just by a little bit more way of background, there are actually several different structures already existing on this site. All these are already existing structures. We have a main house here, located just to the south of the barn that we're proposing to convert. The main house is about, well, it's 2,428 square feet in size. And then there's a garage that goes along with the main house, located here. And that garage is 520 square feet in size. And there's also a shed located just behind the garage, and that is 182 square feet in size. There's an old concrete slab here, a ruin of sorts, sort of, sort of, it's a bit of a retaining wall, kind of tucks into the landscape there. It's nothing more than just a deteriorated concrete slab at this point. There's no plans to do anything with that. And then we have a newly constructed swimming pool here. What you see here is a pad for some pool equipment, and there's an underground propane tank associated with that along with a generator. But back to the subject of tonight, and that is this barn here. And this barn is 1,700 square feet in size as it sits. And that's on two floors, so the first floor and second floor are both identical essentially. And our proposal is to convert this barn into a two-bedroom detached accessory dwelling. And as it stands, the proposal's before the ZBA right now to ask for an allowance to increase the allowable square footage in this building. The town requires that no more than 900 square feet be part of a detached accessory dwelling. And we're before the ZBA asking to go up to 1,200 square feet in floor area. And the reason for that is because right now, as it sits, we have 1,700 square feet, actually 1,750 square feet, excuse me. So just even as it sits in front of the ZBA, we're already talking about stripping 550 square feet out of the building. And the way we'll accomplish that is to cut away a portion of the second floor. So essentially, what you'd have is the entire first floor that exists today left intact. And then you'd have two bedrooms and a staircase, part of a staircase on the second floor. And then you'd open up the rest of the second floor and create sort of a two-story effect, so that you could look over and see below. And then when you're on the main level, you can look up and see, you know, the ceiling essentially two stories up. So given the fact that it's a conversion of an existing building, that's our primary argument with the ZBA, to be allowed to do a little bit more square footage than is currently allowed. But even at that, we'd still be stripping away some of the existing barn to accomplish what's intended here. And then before we get off of this, because I do have some elevations and some pictures and floor plans of what's proposed here, I just wanted to talk briefly about the fence, which is also part of this application, or part of separate application before the planning board. And that involves 165 linear feet of 6-foot privacy fence. And that involves, um, one-hundred-and-sixty-five linear feet of six-foot privacy fence, so, sort of, sort of these two lengths of fence. Um, the rest of the fence that you see here is actually a, um, a split rail fence with, um, metal mesh on it. So, not a privacy fence, doesn't require the approval of the Planning Board. It's just this section that faces, um, essentially forms the west line of the fence, and this section, which forms, for all intents and purposes, the south line of the fence. So, one-hundred-and-sixty-five linear feet of fence that we're before the Planning Board to talk about. And, um, it's actually thirty linear feet facing the road. So, you've got one-hundred-and-thirty-five linear feet on the north end, and you've got about thirty linear feet, exactly thirty, linear feet that, parallel essentially, Old Primrose Hill Road there, um, just, just to be clear about what, what we're talking about. And then we do have some photographs of them, so of that fence, if you want to see it tonight, or...
You can see them, I think.
Okay, so, I can go over the floor plan and photographs, where there's... Um, I want to look on that, see where it is. There we go, elevations, let's do elevations. Elevations and floor plans, so maybe it makes sense to start with floor plans. Yeah, there we go. Um, so again, two stories, um, all within the existing footprint of the building. Uh, this would be the lower level, um, about, here's where the swimming pool sits, I'm sorry, about here is where this swimming pool sits today. Um, this is a shade structure, open to the sky, it's made out of cedars, some bark cedar timbers. Um, but the concept here is to, um, open up three doorways into the barn facing the pool. Um, one of the main purposes of doing this barn and the pool together in this location was because it could have the joint purpose of being a guest cottage, if you will, but a detached accessory dwelling, and also a second purpose as a cool house. So what you end up being able to do is use this kitchen and this bathroom, and even, you know, the indoor dining table, uh, when you're out entertaining at the pool. Don't need to build separate pool facilities, um, to do those things. And then, at night, you can close it up, or in the wintertime, or when guests are there, you can close the doors, and then it functions perfectly well as a detached accessory dwelling. So, um, pretty open floor plan, what you see here are the existing, uh, post beam structures, which are beam up in place. Um, basically, a water closet on this level, a large mechanical room, largely because it has to function for both this building and the swimming pool. And then, um, a fairly small kitchen with an island, um, this is a furniture one, so it shows a dining table, and a section on that level, so you can appreciate the intended use of the building. And then, there should be another slide to go up to the second floor. Exactly, so then, uh, two bedrooms on the second floor, staircase that takes you there, and then a bathroom, a full bathroom in between. So, guests stay in there to take a shower, you know, there's toilet facilities both up and down. And then, there's two bedrooms, one designed as a master and one designed as sort of a secondary bedroom. It's called that as master bedroom, kids will, but, you know, the idea being one is a little more grand than the other. And then, this area here would be the roughly five-hundred-and-fifty square feet that we're carving away from the building. And so, that area below, which would all have the dining table and the couches, and all would have a two-story effect. And the effect would be that you'd look up through the existing post of beam structure and you'd see the, the peak of the barn roof above. And then, we could flip through the elevations. Um, so this is the side facing the pool, so this would essentially be the north side. Um, there's that cedar structure that we talked about earlier, um, the doors that open out to the pool, uh, there's a bluestone patio there today, that folks will open up onto. This is the side, uh, that essentially faces north, um, doing what's actually the same as it is today, um, not a lot of, uh, orientation, um, so the side that faces west. Just an entry door, so that you could access out to the driveway, because the driveway for this building is on that side. I'm going to give another sheet, with the other two elevations, there we go. This would be the south side, the side that faces the roadway. And then, this would be the side, uh, that faces the main house, so, essentially, the side of the building facing out to the main house. And again, um, a passage door, so that you could enter this building from the main house and not have to access through the pool area, because in the wintertime, the pool covers on, and, you know, for various reasons, like snow caring, it's a lot easier just to take the direct shot into the building from the house, um, or in some cases, actually to access the pool outright, go through the building and out to the pool through the garage doors. And then, you should have some photographs in there. Not the greatest photographs. Um, so just in terms of some existing, uh, conditions, this one's a little bit of an older photograph that doesn't have this cedar shade structure in it, but this is the side that faces the pool, where the plan is to put the three large doors. Um, in another photograph, you'll see that structure, which is sitting right here, and then that is the bluestone patio, which has since been extended a little bit, so it actually goes a little bit further in front of the building. Um, this is the side facing, um, where, where I talked about the driveway beam. Um, you can see that privacy fence that runs along this section here, that six-foot privacy fence, um, that we've got the sequence running on. And then, these lower pictures, even the other two elevations of the building, I'm sorry, they're all the same elevation than the pool. Um, but this is the side facing the house, and the location where we had talked about placing an entry door, so that coming up from the house, access would not need to be through the pool area.
Darren, are there mechanicals now for the pool?
Well, there's, yeah, they're in the barn already, so they're, they're sort of sat there on pallets and things like that. Um, the pool filter and the heater, things are outside on a, a pad separate from the building. The mechanicals that serve the pool are, are things like shut-off valves, um, there's a water treatment system, um, for the well, because it's a plaster pool, so we have to be worried about harnessing water and things like that, um, ultimately, it's removed for the winter. So it's both the pool and the cool house. And then, maybe say something else, um, some transfer switches and things. A little bit older pictures, sorry, the bottoms, rather. Um, photograph of, I'll bring some better pictures for a couple of here, but photographs of the, uh, main house, this is looking at it from Old Primrose Hill Road. Uh, another shot of the main house, and this is what I called out earlier as the garage, so that's an existing building, right on the roadway. Just, uh, two more elevations of the main house, this is the backside of the main house, um, backside of the garage, and that's the little shed, the hundred-and-eighty-two square foot shed that I had mentioned earlier. And then, this is the view, if you're coming up Old Primrose Hill, essentially headed west, which would have the backside of the house that you're looking at. Um, everything we're talking about is sort of in the distance past it. Another view of, again, it's called the garage, there's the shed, and then this is the building, once again, we're proposing the conversion. And this is looking back at the garage, the shed, and the main house from, again, the barn that we're talking about, uh, converting to a detached accessory dwelling. Here's some newer pictures.
I'm sorry, there, there's a plan looking at it. So the various types of fence, are they, are existing today as protection around the pool?
They are.
They, they meet code?
They meet code, the requirement would be to have door alarms in the barn, um, so the barn is screwed shut at this point.
No, no, I mean, I'm looking at this real fence, I, I...
There's a wire mesh, there's a metal mesh on it that you can't see, um, you know, a three-inch square metal mesh on, on that fence, so it does meet, uh, requirements for a barrier. And the gates definitely have the...
It's hard to see, yeah.
Yeah, it's hard to see at this scale. Um, but this is the, um, split rail fence, uh, that Melody's asking about, and hard to see is that there's a metal mesh on that fence. Um, and then this is, once again, the six-foot privacy fence, the side facing the road, and then it runs along this stretch here. Um, the intent being to screen it from cars driving by, but also the neighbors, and of course, the intent here being to screen it from the roadway and anybody pulling into the driveway. Um, that is the possibly completed, but partially completed, looks more like, uh, cedar shaded structure there. And, as I mentioned, the bluestone patio that's in front of the building, which kind of wraps, you know, gives the form issue around the pool. Um, and then not showing this picture on the other side of fences where you have the, the pool equipment pad, but things are, that are outside and the generator. And then, the landscaping around the pool, um, plus quite a bit more is, um, all reason for this, as well as the sign.
Do you know just the age of the barn?
Um, you know, I should know, I know the neighbor across the street said that he was moved there, um, sixty or so.
It's a minute, two hundreds, and it was moved there, it was moved there, I want to say, in the eighties, I think.
Eighties, yeah, okay, yeah, so...
Hey, a question.
Forty years ago.
Where, where are the plans for the exterior materials?
Um, largely what you see, um, our plan is actually to go over, to strip off the battens, leave the boards, and then put some rigid insulation board, and then, sort of, re-board and batten the building. Um, the idea is that that allows us to keep the beam structure on the interior exposed. So if you imagine the beams protrude off the wall today, and if we were to eat up that space with studs and sheet rock, you would no longer see the post of beam structure on the exterior walls. So our concept is to build essentially a SIPs panel and wrap the building in a SIPs panel for insulation purposes, get wires through and things, and then put insulation on the backside of the existing siding. And, uh, that would allow the majority of the existing post of beam structure to show through and just be framed by some sheet rock. So you can imagine the wood offset by some light color paint on the walls, so it really pops. Because it all mirrors the post of beam structure that crosses the building.
Is it your plan to leave the upper doors that would normally be into the second story?
The plan shows some windows to those, yeah, so if we go back to the renderings, you can see that we're talking about adding some more windows in, but in a symmetrical pattern.
Because those, uh, those two doorways to the upper level add a nice architectural touch to the structure.
Yep, no doubt, and I think we're trying to replicate some of that with keeping the patterning of the building traditional to the barn. Um, and if you see the elevation, um, in the other sheet, the road-facing elevation, we've actually incorporated an element of a, of a barn door to it. You know, the idea here being, this would feel very much typical of the barn, in that, the grade is such that you could actually drive hay wagons and things up to those doorways on the road. So, the grade is done such that that, even right at earth level, gives a very realistic sense that those would be doors used for actual farm purposes. But, given the fact that it's living area, the idea of having windows is a lot more desirable than, you know, doors and lights and...
We did another application years ago, um, I think it was last one, where there was, there was discussion about those second level windows. And in that case, they, um, instructed almost sliding panels, and then over the windows, so that when the house was not used, you could get the look from the original, just sharing how it looked out in another location.
Yeah.
So you had kind of the best of both worlds, getting the light in there, but also staying as true to the architectural structure elements as possible.
Yeah, and we've done that in various projects before, you know, the challenge here is that one living area trying to be very symmetrical, so the view, the light coming through the beams is, it's all sort of centered and, and, you know, every day matches. Um, to have the light available to you on a, on a daily basis without having to make any adjustments to the outside of the building.
I, I think it's a true goal.
Yeah, and then sometimes they also block the next window, which would be this case where you slid it over, it just blocked the next window down. So, a little bit more difficult to achieve in this situation, but something that we've definitely done before, um, and what we're trying to do on the lower level of that door.
Where did, where was it moved from?
I'll have to find out more from the neighbor.
Was it moved from within my back or further than that, Melody?
I don't think it was, I think it was moved further. I, I sold the property, which is why I know some things about it. Also, those doors, if I remember correctly, I, like, the, the entry door that you see on the side here, and I believe those, they look like they've been modifications. They don't look original from, from my recollections, they look like they've been, there's definitely modifications that have been done. Some elements have, you know, some original character to it, but I think those doors and those things you're referencing have been added.
Were before the move or after the move?
I, I don't, I don't know, actually, but certainly they didn't look, again, just off my memory, didn't look original to the time of construction.
Yeah, certainly, um, these doors, and I can't remember the inside of these doors, but you can see the much lighter wood color there. It's not what the rest of the interior walls look like, they're much darker brown, much older materials. Um, so this was used more for oak storage and motorcycle storage and insulated surroundings.
Other questions?
Where was the pool moved from?
Dispatch somewhere.
Okay, because I looked at partial access in the area, it's not shown on the database, so I'm just, it's actually random.
Yeah, I think we finished it, uh, fourth of July.
Yeah, so the parcel has access into the, to the barn of the building eighteen sixty, and that lists all the other buildings on the properties, but also, I don't know if that's just, you know, it's accurate or just to take the, the...
Yeah, I know from the neighbor, forty, fifty years ago, it was moved there, um, but, you know, it could be eighteen sixty.
So did the answer to most of my questions, but the one that it did have, that it looked like there was an inconsistency in the lighting, but you had proposed, you had one cut for the light, and then you had something different shown in the elevation, and...
Yeah.
It seemed like the elevation was more consistent with the barn structure than maybe the one that was shown as the cut, I just wanted to ask about that on the other side.
Yeah, we were, we were originally going in more modern direction, and backed off of it, so I need to update the light that you have to be more traditional barn coosneck light.
Looking more something like...
More, this is more correct, is what it's intended. Um, and what I submitted was classic, but a little bit more modern, a little bit smaller in size, um, these make a little bit more of a, of a statement.
Yeah, and in terms of cutoff lighting, the lighting standards, I think, they could be a little more consistent.
Sure, so I can update that as far as the...
Other questions? Hearing done. That is sufficient. The time right, and both are access follows, on the application by Old Primrose LLC for site plan approval, Special Use for Max, uh, for converting a barn to an accessory dwelling at six Primrose Hill Road, in the work countryside zone. And I assume at the same time, it's also for the fence, the practice of this, yeah. Accepts the application and supporting documents as adequate for initial review by the Planning Board, its advisors and the public. Classifies the proposed action as a type two action under C E C, for which coordinated environmental quality reviews concluded. Schedules a public hearing on the application for February...
Twenty-fifth, at six forty?
At six forty. Who would like to go for a visit?
I would.
Kathy? I would. Kathy and Melody? Do you have a site visit? In accordance with Town Code Chapter nine, Conservation Advisory Board refers to the application's Conservation Advisory Board for review of written comments concerning environmental factors. In accordance with the Department of Planning and Development, two-three-nine, refers to the application to Dutch's County Department of Planning and Development for review, and authorizes without prejudice to any information or content that may be presented in public hearing and may arise based on both the above cited field visit and referrals. Preparation of a working draft of appeals for an approvals resolution for the Planning Board's consideration on February twenty-fifth, or as may be later timed. Is that under motion to approve? Second?
Second.
Holler's favor?
Our.
Very good. Who?
Me, thank you.
And we get in touch with, uh, Kathy and Melody about site visit, and we'll see if you'll...
Good, thank you.
Okay. Okay, we're a little late, we're gonna, we have one other theory tonight. Michael Nicola, Rumor Hall in Morton Road?
It was seven-shoot, yeah.
No, I think we have, we need to do, the schedule is seven, so we need to finish.
We've heard you've done many.
Again?
And he scheduled at six fifty-five.
Oh, okay. You did it seven fifty?
We can't start early, we'll have to start here.
Oh, okay. Hang in there, Michael.
I got a busy moment, so how long will you look at?
Hopefully, not very long. Uh, actually, yours will be quite short. Uh, Richard, you're up in that?
Well, okay.
Uh, three, four, eight, and fifty, Manhattan Road, site plan approval, review plan approval, construction of a shed.
I'm going to need to go in to the program. So the, uh, oh, that got under, yes. So as you can see, indicated on the site plan in yellow, um, as a proposal for a storage shed. It's three sections, reminding each one, structure. And, uh, what I'd like to do, and I don't know if this all just things at all, but if it's approved, I would, I would... I would like to bring this a little closer to the... I would like to bring this a little closer to the setback so that I could align this structure with the building. So we're going to be parallel to mine this year. I did discuss it with the engineer and it can be done. We'll have to go a couple of feet this way and coming back to the seventy-five foot setback, so. That's pretty mature, but I wanted to, to indicate my wishes.
Any questions?
Um, so regarding moving the shed, uh, I hope you're allowed below seventy-five feet. The setback is a hundred, you're allowed below seventy-five percent of the, it's had cross the line setback. So as long as you stay within the, the court requirements, I believe that red dotted line is the seventy-five.
Yeah, the red dotted line is the seventy-five foot and uh, he was giving me some reason to try to utilize the sound tubes that I employed in place last year.
So as long as you stay, you know, within the setback requirement, you're fine.
Yep.
Just make sure you don't cross that.
And I think you all have, um, the drawings of the, of the shed, the structure, elevation.
Any questions?
Um, you, you propose some lighting on there? I'd just like to see your picture.
Yes, that should be your last cut sheet here. On page thirty, page thirty-one. And I had, um, I'm for, I'm for, um, one on each side, but I didn't know, maybe you, you all had a kind of, um, approach that you like. In other words, I'm, because, because of the location and I'm trying to tuck it away and not have to be seen, my thought is, is to have that light on the front, in the center, and that light only. It's not an issue of cost so much as just being courteous to. One of the nice things about Ryback is being able to see the sky. So I'd like to do what I can, especially back there, um, approximately with the neighbors and have just one lamp. And in fact, I've chosen, there's two manufacturers that make, um, these fixtures with the twenty-seven hundred K bulb, which is the Lumix, the original, Tumsdine, which I prefer. And I think most people do, or at least once they see it, so I'm just gonna use that.
The other question I have, maybe something we want to discuss, Michael, the, um, total area of accessory structure. See if there's a large, there's a large garage on the property already. This garage right here is, is yours, right?
Yes, that, that's the, um, I think it's called the primary structure. So it's, it precedes the house. And my understanding from, um, the town Ryback, the letter I received is that then the accessory buildings, um, start after that garage structure, in terms of square footage.
So the zoning enforcement officer actually identified, what was the primary structure and what the accessory structure?
Correct.
And she identified that the garage is the primary?
Yes.
And I think that removes my comment, I think. Which related to just the size of the accessory structures.
Yes. Yeah, I'm still, I think I'm still below them, even if you pumped a dwelling house, although I'm not sure how that dwelling unit is, but maybe that's not relevant here, but.
Based on my calculation, I think you're okay, but it depends on the interpretation.
Yes, and they, they sent me a letter to the effect. Can the meeting be?
The rest is going to grab a copy of the law. But I'm guessing that probably, since you're here tonight and you know what's in the area, you probably. So go ahead with that. Any other questions? Okay, well, let me read this while questions get to that. In accordance with the planning board, who drafts this file, and applications by Richard Hopeknecht?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. For site plan approval in the Councilor Chapter one two five, the construction of a shed at three, four, eight, three fifty, Ryback Road in the RA ten and RCO in the zoning districts. Exsects the, uh, application supporting documents is adequate for mission review by the planning board and surprises in the public. Thank you, Gretchen. Classifieds of proposed act as type two under C of which ordinary environmental reviews concluded. Schedule a public hearing on the application for February twenty fifth. At six forty-five. Six forty-five. Delegates planning board members. Who's gonna go with me?
I'm going.
Sharon. Sharon and myself. In accordance with the field visit of the project, setting up your association with the planning public hearing. In accordance with the Councilor Chapter nine, conservation judgeable refers to the application to conservation judgeable review on written comment concerning environmental factors. In accordance with Councilor Chapter one one eight, water consistency review refers to the application to water content judgeable review on written comment concerning consistency of L W R P. In accordance with the Dutch county department of planning development two three nine, refers the application to the Dutch county department of planning development review and authorizes without prejudice to an information or comment may be presented in public hearing and may arise based on the above cited field visit and referrals. Preparation of a working draft of an appeals resolution to the planning board consideration on February twenty fifth. Could I hear a motion to approve? Second. All in favor?
Are.
Very good. Will we get any touches of set of the set of this?
The, the, the letter is, it's fine.
Okay, yeah, you're all set on that.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Uh, Michael, we didn't hear of the, um, the, the, the barn conversion that we just had before us and all. Was that referred to you or Nancy?
I haven't seen it.
Well, consider. Consider it referred to you.
Pardon me?
Consider it referred to you and Nancy for your review. Because the barn, I guess, was built in eighteen sixty-something or something like that. And, um, and we don't know this local and, you know. We don't believe it's a designated historic structure in our town or anything. We just like a little info about it. You guys are buying it. Okay? Okay, our final item, last but not least, Michael DeCola, Blumer Hollow, Morton Road, site plan and special use permit. And before we get started, there are a couple of things I need to tell you. On Monday night, week ago, the town board passed an amendment to the solar law regarding, regarding screening of commercial rooftop, uh, installations. And what they have done is the, uh, amendment says that screening is not required for commercial rooftop installations unless it's being placed on a historic building. Uh, unfortunately, the state, Department of State has not yet informed us that they have received that. So technically, that amendment is not yet in force. We have to wait for that particular amendment to be enforced. There are also a section on one twenty-five four eight which requires screening of all commercial uses in residential districts that are not within a contained building, not inside some building. Um, I've spoken with the Z E O about that because I just want to make sure that that would be consistent with the amendment amongst the Department of State actually does approve it and lets us know it's part of the law. So I've asked her for determination so that we will have that hopefully shortly. At this point, if we were to proceed with dealing with this application, we have to proceed under the law as it currently exists, which requires screening for a commercial rooftop application. It's not the intent of the town board, given what they passed, but until the State Department, Department of State, Department of State tells us they have gotten it and they have filed that law, it's not the law yet. So what I would like to do is continue the public hearing. Assuming the state will get this done relatively quickly, although I don't know. To our February twenty-fifth meeting, at which time we'll know, A, what law we're looking at, because right now we don't really know. And B, we should have a determination from the Z E O about exactly the applicability of section one two five dash four eight to the, uh, to our review of this project and similar projects. So that's what I would like to do. Michael, it's, it's your application.
What can we get done tonight? I mean, I, I, it's kind of frustrating to have sat here in front of our, to wait to hear that.
I understand that.
And I don't know why that couldn't have happened.
Well, it was a town board action. It strikes me that the town board should have made it clear that until the Department of State has it on file, it's not enforced. I just found out today.
I'm frustrated that you guys didn't communicate that earlier.
I just found out today.
So what can get done tonight?
We can, basically all we can do is continue the public hearing and hope that the State Department of State actually acts on that so that we know exactly what the law is that we're dealing with. And I'm sure we'll have a determination from the Z E O by then as well. That's not going to take a whole lot of time. I spoke with her informally. She believes that the intent of the town board was not to require screening in this particular instance for commercial rooftop installations. She believes that that intent and that amendment supersedes section one two five four eight. But we need to get that obviously in writing. And, um, I'm sure we'll have that this week. That's not a problem. And the delay is going to be the Department of State up in Albany letting us know that indeed they've received it and it's on file and it's now part of the plan of Ryback is on the book.
Well, I, I can't imagine that we could proceed tonight and any questions that you had about the application, understanding that that's the process that we're looking to take. There's not going to be new questions that come up if the Department of State says okay. So why wouldn't you, why wouldn't we take in use this time? And then if you have to continue the public hearing for a procedural.
Yeah, we do have to continue the public.
Then you could just open it, vote, and close the public hearing in the next meeting.
Well, it may alter some of the questions depending on what we end up with getting.
Well, either the, the Department of State's gonna say okay or not.
I'm pretty sure they're gonna say good. I'm quite sure that the Z E O is gonna say that it does not, uh, the, uh, one two five four eight does not supersede one two five four seven as amended by the town board last Monday night.
Right.
But I don't know that. And if something were to be different, if there were to be a change, I'm not anticipating it, but if there were to be a change, then we have a somewhat, we have a problem. We have the law, one two five four seven says one thing, and one two five four is interpreted to saying something else. In which case we have a bit of a legal problem.
Yeah, there's verbiage in the law that they pass that says it supersedes.
Well, that's, I know, but I want the Z E O to tell me that because.
So I, I don't foresee your questions as a board changing unless the Z E O comes back and says no. In which case we're in a whole different kettle of.
Yeah.
Expertise.
Exactly.
Why wouldn't we proceed tonight with the understanding that?
If we choose to do that, then, then we can do that, yeah.
Because I, I'd rather get the questions out of the way and then if things do go as we hope, I hope, um, you can open the public hearing, vote, and close it.
Okay, what I'll do is I'll ask members of the planning board, if we have any questions, if you'd like to raise.
Well, is this a public hearing?
Yes, oh yes.
Well, I guess one question I have is, assuming that you get a letter from the Z E O, what do you expect? Are you then, or is the planning board going to go to the zoning board of appeals and ask for an interpretation?
You can do that. That's we up to the members of the planning board, decided whether to wish to do that.
Oh, would we begin to discuss that and when?
Well, the first thing you do is you wait to get the determination letter. You know exactly what you're discussing, exactly what the, the language is that's in that letter. At this point, we don't have anything to discuss in terms of that letter.
Would you expect that to occur at the next meeting?
I hope to, well, if necessary, yes. And we should certainly have that letter by then.
And then if the planning board wished to proceed to the zoning board of appeals, that would then delay this application?
It would, it would.
Could you do a straw poll to see if that's where the board is?
You know, I didn't, I'm sorry, and, and I couldn't hear very well. Just repeat. Yes. It's, it's my opinion that the planning, despite the fact that the new solar law does not require commercial installations to screen, it's my view that the planning board retains the authority to require such screening if the planning board believes that it's necessary, given the location, you know, the situation, et cetera. And I base that on the planning board's authority under site plan review, which clearly gives the planning board, in fact, tells the planning board to consider landscaping first in site plan review and gives the planning board the authority to require screening. So if the zoning board, or the zoning officer says that her interpretation of this new law is that screening may not be required by the planning board, then I would like the planning board to go to the zoning board of appeals to ask for an interpretation. Because I believe it's very important for the planning board to retain our authority, given circumstances which will always be specific to require screening.
And if you're talking about screening roofs, it's not screening doors.
Michael, Michael, you have the, I want to, I want to. Does anyone understand exactly what that is asking for? And I don't think it's, if I may put it this way, I don't think it is specific necessarily just to this particular project. I think he's talking about principally in general, uh, revering basically to the site plan, uh, Article seven.
Right. And I certainly understand, but screening could not get in the way of the sun hitting the roof. However, from a perspective, uh, from another property, from a road, et cetera, screening can certainly do what's called obscure, uh, in installation.
So the process that we went through, both with the zoning board of appeals and with the town in examining this law, was addressing exactly the problem that you're talking about. Which is that when you talk about changing the color of a roof, which is really what we're looking at, there is no effective way to screen roofs from, from you. You are, if you hold that power, you are then saying that there is no roof mounted systems in the town. Because someone will always be able to come and say, I don't want to have to see it. And if, that's why the screening requirement was taken out. So while you're talking about planning board, power of controlling landscaping and, and new sheds, which is certainly a huge part of what you're charged to do, in this very specific instance, we're talking about roofs. And there's a very common sense look at this where you say, hey, can you put up screening that's going to keep people from seeing roofs? And the answer is no, you can't. And that's why we're here with this new law. So to have it go back now again, I, I, certainly you all are going to vote on it, but it's, you need to be really clear about what she's asking. Yes, you can retain your power to require screening for site planning, for buildings that are, come before you and require site plan review. But to say that the planning board is going to enter into screening changes in roof color because it wants to retain its power to control landscaping is, I think, a little bit of a different story.
So, Michael, I'm struggling to understand why you want to have this dialogue tonight when there are some, albeit known, but not yet implemented law that would support essentially first what you want to do. So why do you want to discuss tonight, number one, for the intention of number one? And then I do understand your perspective with regard to what it is saying. And you're exactly right. It's my understanding that the intent of the amendment was to deal with exactly with that.
Yeah. So the reason I wanted, is because we've all been here already. We're sitting here, we have this time. I've already spent fifteen hours in meetings and more than fifteen thousand dollars moving this to the point where the town, and you are looking at a law that makes sense. It may not be the letter of the law at this moment because you need someone to sign off on it. I don't imagine that anyone in the State Department is going to say no. And I also believe that the town zoning enforcement officer is going to look at what's written in that law that says it supersedes other requirements for roof, not the screenings. what's written in that law that says it supersedes other requirements for roof, not the screenings, and say that the town intended that there not be screening requirements for roof changes in roof color. So I'd like to use the time. That's why, that's why I think we should have the discussion tonight because nothing different from my perspective is going to get said a week from now unless the whole thing's on its head. And that will have to go back to the town because I know what they intended with this law. They made it really clear. So why wouldn't we use this time?
And so letting a continuance of the public hearing happen tonight, you think just simply delays the inevitable?
I think, I think it gives everyone the chance to think about it and certainly to hear from people who are opposed to it, but we're going to hear those voices anyway. And the law and our case for allowing us to provide clean solar power for 40 homes in the town is, is a very powerful statement by both the law and what we're trying to do. So I don't think any of that will change a week from now or a month from now. And I don't really want to come back again and spend another hour waiting. I'd rather say what we have to say, answer any questions that you have about the project, and move forward. That's, that's why I'd like to take care of this now.
Is there anyone from the public, Michael?
Yeah, there are quite a few.
So while I'm up here, are there any questions that you have? You've all seen, well, maybe not, the proposal. These are existing agricultural buildings. We're proposing to change the color of the roof from green to a black solar panel looking roof color. The, it will be a half a megawatt of solar, which is, depending on how much you use, edge your own. But that's the, that's the roof. We actually have 100 panels on the roof right now in this section, which are panels that are powered for the farm and farm residences. Okay, that's what it looks like now, to get an idea of what the, the huge change that happens. So... This is the before and what's being passed around is, is the real after.
The one before, didn't it have trees?
Well, these, so these were, this was the Saratoga Associates landscaping, phone remembering something they did. So this is the existing and then that was, I'm not sure what that was. That's, that was trying to show what the screening requirement would do.
And this, this is the, this is today?
This is current, this is today.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's, I mean, I don't know if it's today, today, it's probably...
Well, it's close enough.
Close enough. Last night's sunny day. So... The buildings and the solar that's going to go on them are a great resource. They secure... A conservative estimate is fifty, probably 75 acres of open farmland in productive use. And the solar provides an added income for that use, which secures it. And that's a net net positive. I think you can look now and see from that picture that what we're really talking about is changing the color of the existing roof's building, buildings roof. And by changing that color, we're providing power for 40 homes or will be able to provide power for 40 homes. The visual impact change, I mean, subjectively you could say I don't like that color, but as far as an impact change from an existing building of going from the green to the black, it's not something that I believe you guys should stick your, your considerable planning power into. It's, it should be, in my estimation, outside of that. And that's what I think the town was trying to say, is look, this is low hanging fruit. By changing the color of buildings roofs, we are providing a resource of clean energy that's otherwise just lost.
Any other questions, Michael, from the board?
Well, so if, if we want to accept what you say, which is that there is no way to physically screen roof mounted solar, that, that's what you, you've said that.
What I'm saying is that, yeah, I think, I think the requirement to screen a roof from view is absurd.
Okay, so I'm basically hearing what you're saying.
Yeah.
But you, am I correct that requests that have been made perhaps by neighbors to add plant material to property to break up the mass of the buildings is a different issue than the roof, screening the roof mounted solar?
So, yeah, that's, they are, they are two very, very separate issues.
I agree.
And they are approached in two very different planning processes.
I, I agree. And so my question is, would, would the offering of landscaping that would cut up the mass visually from the road of the neighbors, is that an offering that could be made voluntarily to mitigate some of the issues that have been raised by the neighbors?
So when I first came before you, it's almost a year ago, the pictures that you saw were a very expensive visual impact study that took existing hedges that we had and moved them into the photograph in a way that you could see what, what would look like if we improved and maintained the existing hedge that was there, which is a considerable expense.
I'm not talking about, I, I just made a general statement.
I'm responding, I'm responding to your general statement. It's taking a little longer.
Yeah, oh no.
The reaction to that proposal was that it was not enough screening and that it didn't, it did not provide enough protection for the neighbors from the visual impact that was so horrible in commercial.
I'm not sure that I recall if the neighbors rejected that in hand, but...
Oh, that was the comments that were, that were made. So...
So, so the...
Our, and our reaction to that was, wow, well, that's about what we can do. And if that's not enough, we have to appeal for determination on what was really intended by that screening. So we went through the process of the zoning board of appeals hearing and they said the law is poorly written. So we ended up back to where the town had to readdress the law to really make it say what they intended.
But if you were offering some form of voluntary screening, it wouldn't be determined by the neighbors whether they liked the extent of it or not. That would be a determination, the planning board could determine the acceptability of.
But see, the problem is, is that screening the buildings, that would be a different discussion.
I, I guess I'm asking you how that discussion?
Well, you can't.
Why can't I?
The buildings are built, they're agricultural buildings, and they don't go through that same process of requirement.
I, I'm only asking you to have a voluntary conversation, not a requirement.
But if you, you were asking for two things. You were saying that the, if you, as a planning board, would ask me to volunteer to do some screening, that would be, but not as a requirement for approval, that would be a very different discussion, which I would be happy to have. I resist, given what I've gone through and how difficult what seems to me still at this moment to be a very common sense, obvious thing, which is, it's a roof, it's going to change color.
And I, let me be clear, I'm not talking just about the roof, like I just...
But that's what we're here to talk about, the application. So voluntary screening of buildings, so I maintained the hedge on that road for years so that the activities of the farming behind it would be protected and would help to mitigate some of that. Now, the law requires that any construction that happens on adjoining properties, they're supposed to do the screening. You know that, that's the ag law. They're supposed to provide screening from agricultural activities on their property. It's not supposed to be the farmer's, the farmer's responsibility. So we talk about this voluntary discussion, which I am happy to have, but it's in this context of they're supposed to be putting it on their property. And they say, well, our front yards may not be big enough, or we don't want to, the, the ag law, if you read it, says the neighbors are responsible for screening themselves from the agricultural activity. That includes buildings, smells, spraying, all the activities that are protected under the right formula. So that discussion, if the planning board were going to have it in this context with agricultural buildings, should include the neighbors screening themselves. And it didn't seem like that was ever something that you or they brought up. I brought it up a few times. But if we're going to have that discussion, I would want that to be included because that's what the law requires. So, yeah.
Part of the confusion that we came to is that, and the ag screening, as you're saying, ag screening is one thing, but we did find, you know, Dr. Summers, that community solar is not considered agricultural across the property that agriculture...
No, it's not.
It's not. And that's why the only meaning that the county would really dispute it would be specifically to address the solar panels and not the buildings.
That's right. And I, and, and all along in every discussion that we've had about this, it was clear to me, and now the town board has made it clear to everybody, that in the drafting of this law, they did not see commercial use of solar panels on roofs as an impact that required that mitigation. So the conversation immediately goes back to the buildings, which is why we really were talking about it all.
That's not relevant to this application because...
That's right.
It's strictly the non-agricultural component.
Right, which is the piece on the roof, which is why we're here and we had to have a whole discussion.
Correct.
But what, what the town has done in their amendment to the law is make it very clear that this use on a roof is different than in a field. And the reason Ag and Marcus doesn't want to get into it as an agricultural use is because they don't want, I've had this discussion with Dr. Summers, they don't want solar power production to take away from arable land use. And this, this actually doesn't do that. It increases the viability of that arable land because it adds income to the animal It's actually, and he said, that's a great idea, we can't separate that out. It's too fine a line for us to draw. So they're not going to do that.
No, they're not.
And, but I don't think they have to. I think the town did in, in, in the way they wrote the law.
It's clearly their intent and the problem with the law right now is if they pass...
You need to go and dot all the i's. I get that.
And I do believe that the CEO is, is in step with that.
I, this is why she wouldn't do that.
And, but just because of the meticulous nature of our community and nature, our nation, I want to make very sure that the planning board acts well in the law, you know, specifically what we can and can't do and specifically what the law instructs us to do.
Well, I, I would actually turn that, I agree with you. I think you should turn that back on the board because your comment, Edna, earlier made me really concerned about how this process would be dragged back through another round of examination that it didn't really need.
Perhaps what we, what we could do is take a, take a straw poll to see, you're not prepared to do that? Okay, but anyway, I think that's something that, you know, we, I have obviously not discussed this with the members of the town planning board, so I don't know what this is. Yeah, there, you know, I think...
The laws, they would protect both the applicant and the community and all the neighbors and everyone impacted. And I think that what the town board has done is very clearly stated what their intent was originally in this amendment. It's really clear.
Their intent is clear.
Yeah.
I think, I think there's also some discussions with them, with the supervisor, and I do believe that was their intent, yes. Are there, anything else the planning board would like to say before we put public?
Just regarding the discussion of the planning board going to the CBI, I did a quick look on Department of State and it does say that it can be done. It's extremely rare. I'm not a lawyer, so I don't want to get John's opinion on that, but based on this Department of State document that was pulled up, it does appear it can be done. So at least Michael, you know that is a process that appears could take place, but it is extremely rare based on, just to be clear.
Okay, I'll open it up to the public.
Thank you.
Realize that we are in a position here where we don't have the law or the working numbers specifically defined at this moment. And we will continue this special hearing to the 25th and each time everything should be settled. I'm sure the state can act back with it. And I know that we will have everything the department's zoning board is going to offer.
I will come back and get certain questions. Michael, why not the 3rd of February?
I'm sorry?
Why not the 3rd of February?
Well, someone, well, I think the state will be, will get it done by then.
Why don't we try? Why don't we try? You can always extend it another meeting if they're not...
And there'll be the last one, so that's, I mean, that's...
On February 3rd, there'll be the last one.
And there's two big ones before that.
What time we put the gift to that?
Well, they're older, but I don't like leaving them on.
The 3rd, the problem is the 3rd already has two somewhat contentious public hearings scheduled.
You want to get all those out of the van one night?
Would that were possible?
We'll put up a disco ball.
What we can do is we can put this one on, on the 25th, that we have a...
Do you want?
The 25th.
Seven books?
Three.
What's on? Seven.
Can I get one frog?
It'd have to be a Tuesday because of the holiday and then because the town board meeting is on the Monday.
Picking up on what Melody was talking about, I think it's unfortunate that we could not talk about some screening to break up those long buildings. I'm not talking about what's up there and I don't think Melody was talking about shrubs that high up there. They're talking about breaking up those very long buildings, which are agricultural buildings, but will bear commercial installation. I don't know, you know, if we're talking about some shrubs or something that probably needs, you know, another discussion. But wouldn't it be nice if we could just agree to do this to make the situation more palatable, to the scene grows to the neighbors and just get it done?
You mean agree now?
No, agree that we will talk about it and come to some sort of agreement.
There's nothing that will stop you from raising it at the next meeting.
Yeah, exactly. I think the point is I have raised it, which is why I did. You have indicated I got an openness to talk about it and, and I appreciate that.
I would, I, I would still, I'm going to talk about it after you approve it.
Well, after the fact is a little different.
Well, then, see, but also if, if you're holding it out as a part of approval...
No, no, I did not say that, Michael, and I want to be clear.
Okay, but that's what it felt like when you...
No, let me be clear.
We discussed it earlier, that is not at all...
Okay, good.
I, I am not trying, I understand the approval process and I understand everything that's been said tonight. I'm not saying I'm holding you hostage and coming back to that. I'm just saying, this has become, you know, a source for a lot of people and I just think there's room for offering something that helps to mitigate... think there's room for offering something that helps to mitigate not only the look to some extent, but to mitigate the us and them mentality that none of us want. And so I appreciate the fact that you said you're open to talking about it, and I think all Edna is saying is, hopefully you can come in and talk about maybe some trees, maybe some something. I don't have, I don't have a preconceived notion of what I can, that should look like. I'm very open to some creative ideas.
I believe that there is always the opportunity to do that. I believe that that would also include screening on neighboring properties as per the act law, and I would be happy to provide plant matter and, you know, diggings from the fields that are there now. There's plenty of trees that can be pulled to do that. I don't have, I'm happy to proceed down that line. I do not want to give up what the right to farm law affords us in terms of agricultural buildings because the law, I understand your inclination to try and make it look better. I get it, and I share it for the road. I do. I am absolutely resistant to farmers being forced to pick that up for a community, especially when the law says it's supposed to happen a different way. So there's some competing things there that could be worked out in a real back and forth discussion, but it really raises the arrows in the back of my neck when planning board members are talking about mitigating the impacts of agricultural activities because I've been here before, you guys, a bunch of times for agricultural stuff, and it always comes up that I'm supposed to be the one taking care of it, and that's not what the law says. So my reaction to it is very strong and emotional for those reasons. It doesn't mean I'm not willing to talk about solutions.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the board want to say something?
One quick technical question. I looked at the sketch I was smithing about, and it had a great copy. I'll get a better one. It looked like the panels might have been going off the edge of the roof. When I drove by today, it didn't look like that was the case. I just wanted to clarify because that is actually one of the conditions in the new law, that if the panel doesn't extend off the edge of the roof line, that would then come under the discussion.
No, no.
I saw today, it looked like it's on the roof, it doesn't extend past, and that would be, that would be the same, you're not going to extend over the...
That, I mean, I think that that would change the way the building and the roof look as opposed to just changing the color.
Well, that would change the roof line, that's why that's...
Yeah, I'm sensitive to that.
It looked like that in the plan, I think that's the case, I just wanted to confirm.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that might have been because of the elevation, we're trying to show how it was mounted, but it, in reality, it doesn't come past the edge of the roof wall.
Anyone else in the public who wants to speak tonight, understanding the circumstances of what you're here. Michael?
Thank you. I spent nineteen years as a 94 member across the street here, so I applaud and I thank all of you for taking the time and trying to make this community a better place. I'm here to talk about this application, only from the point of view of its being an historic site. And it's a particularly important historic site. It's not only the oldest piece of property in which there's a reported deed in the northern part of Detonis County, but it's the property that from 1887 to 1920 belonged to a person who was watching over you every meeting here. It belonged to your New York State, our New York State Senator for some twenty-some years before that. But the main reason that it's relevant this evening is that it was that aspect of the property that wasn't the buildings. It was the cultural landscape that attracted the attention of A.J. Downing when he wrote his treatise on theory and practice of landscape gardening. He visited that site in the late 1840s, in the 1851 version of that treatise. He talks about, Ellis Lee, he talks about how spectacular the views are, and he visited the East Gate, and he looked at how pleasing the view was. Now, I can appreciate that there are neighbors that have talked to you, who are concerned about the visual impact, and indeed, some screening would mitigate that visual impact. A.J. Downing hasn't been around for a long time. Neither has William Kelly, neither has Levi Morton, but that is still a, one of the most pleasing sights, cultural landscapes in the United States. And, you know, if the owner wants to be able to use a portion of those buildings to be able to address energy needs, more power to him. Let's do it. But let's do it in a way that keeps this as a place that can be seen as attractive. And that's all that I'm saying. So, thank you.
I'm Karen Barrett. I live at 317 O'Loe, like Laurel, who is out of town, can't be here. And we are the small property directly across the street from one of the three sheds on the New York Poly project. And I'm very encouraged that the conversation around screening has been brought up again and that there is still some hope held out that this possibility might be explored further. It would make a great deal of difference to us who wake up and look at a roof that is longer than a football field and will soon be completely covered with solar panels, to have that mitigated in some way with trees. We just bought this property in 2017, and not sooner had we bought it, when these giant buildings went up. And we knew that there was going to be a farm there, and we thought, okay, you know, these are just going to be, you know, places for livestock and what have you, but then when we found out that there was going to be a huge electrical plant there that was going to be generating power for forty households, that completely changed what this view was going to look like for us. And as I have read this agricultural law, it does not protect electricity as an agricultural product, does not recognize electricity. And so I think that an argument can be made that it is legitimate to screen giant electrical power plants. So I hope that you'll bear that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Robert Dahlson. I live on Mill Road, and I'm going to be very brief. You received a report, hopefully in the email today that I prepared that reflects the opinion of some of the neighbors on our road whom I identified in the report. I'm not going to go into 12548, which I did in that report, but I just want to bring up that the people are not talking about the LWRP, and especially Policies 24, 24A, B, and C. These policies do talk about protecting scenic view sheds. And Melody and Edna, thank you for, you know, your idea tonight about meeting together with all the neighbors, and Michael and members from Suncom there are trying to come up with a resolution. I think that's probably the best way to resolve this matter, right? But I'm asking at the same time to reply also to the LWRP because the conditions are supported by the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, which I outlined in the report. Those screening requirements are also supported by Scenic Hudson in their online report, Green Communities. So take the time and read that report. Thank you for coming up with the idea of talking. It's so important, and hopefully that'd be a way of resolving not just the differences, but some of the attitudes people have towards each other on our road. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
My name is Bob Fox, I live at 323 O'Loe Road, and we have solar panels on our house. We have them now for, the first ones went up twelve years ago, and they were approved by the planning board, and the second panel went up, four years ago, also approved by the planning board.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Sorry?
Speak into the microphone.
Speak into the microphone. Okay. Want me to start over again?
No.
Oh, good.
Okay. I'd also like to say that this building has solar panels on it, although I think it was the apartment of that. The roof of this building is covered with solar panels. The town garage down on, whatever the road is, town garage has solar panels on this side and on the other side, paid for by New York State mostly, and paid for by the town. There is no screening of any of those panels. So they're there, they're, I don't know if you call it a commercial building or whatever, but they're there. And I think in this era that rent, that the idea of global warming, the idea of getting off fossil fuel totally is really, really critical. So I'm 100% in favor of this application. I would wish that Michael has two buildings, and put another building, because I think it's that important, not this power that we have at our hands being used properly. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Anyone on the planning board who would like to further, you should say?
Michael?
Yes.
I said it, be on February 3rd instead of the 25th.
We could do it, but the possibility is, the law still may not even file because the Department of State.
We'll take that chance.
Did you just say anybody again?
We can do it again, but it's also going to be the last thing on that most agenda. It's already a very long agenda. How's the rest of the planning board feel about that?
Okay with me.
Okay, there is nothing further. Would I carry a motion to continue this public hearing to February 3rd at a very late hour?
We can do seven.
Seven?
Yeah.
Okay, let's put, that's what it says, seven's available.
What is that to put the other folks there?
If we get any more new business, it could...
I would rather move it. But I would also encourage people who have comments to kind of get them in writing to us in advance, you know, for later, continue the public hearing, and we expect a lot of comment. You know, really be asking people to limit themselves to a reasonable amount of time, you know, just can't indulge long meetings that are done with the same material.
Only one is the two, is that if we do continue it, if we do it on the 3rd, we have to continue again. We don't know what the next meetings are going to already have, so we don't know how far out.
That's true.
Again, it may go.
Okay, well...
Do we want to add a caveat on that? We want to understand what law we're working under.
I think we have to have that.
Under the current law, we probably will have to postpone it until a new law becomes legal.
That's the make, we're waiting for the...
And it would be good if it's questionable that the applicant be advised ahead of time, and anybody else, especially Dan, that we're still working under the current law.
What I would recommend is that everyone call Gretchen on February 3rd to ask whether or not we're dealing with the amended law or still dealing with the one that currently exists.
So we schedule it?
We're going to schedule it.
We're going to schedule the contingent of time?
No, we're scheduling it on February 3rd at 7:00, and we're going to inform people if the law has not changed, that no sense in showing up, we'll have to continue the pub, we'll have to open the public hearing and continue it at that time to a later date.
That sounds great. Thank you very much for being flexible. I appreciate that. What's the latest time you call Gretchen to find out?
She's here until 3 o'clock on meeting days. Right? Okay. Okay, could I have a motion to begin this to February 3rd at 7:00? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Any other business? Please, I'd be glad to hear your advice. Please. Could I have a motion to include the seasonings under name?
Make a motion, sure.
Second?
Sunday.
All in favor? Very good, stand adjourned.